The April 11th Planning and Zoning -- Planning Commission meeting is now called to order. Madam Secretary, please note that all Commissioners are present. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to have the staff that's present introduce themselves, starting with Madam Secretary.
I'm Stacy Webb. I'm Secretary for the Planning and Development Department.
I'm Lindsay Manda, Legal Advisor.
Jeffrey Lohmerger with the -- I'm the Planner.
Ricky Compton, Planning and Development Director.
I'm Beth James, Chief Executive Assistant to the Parish President.
Tim Ward, Engineering Department.
Tori Crosby, Engineering Department.
Thank you. I want to make sure everyone knew who's working for you. I have a few comments to make before the meeting starts. I appreciate your patience. My remarks are directed to the folks here present, as well as anyone that might be watching on TV tonight. Such remarks in the future will not be nearly so long, but since we're a new commission, I thought it'd be appropriate for you to understand what we do and what we don't do. First, we are all appointed by the Parish Council and are honored by their trust that they placed in us. Our authority, however, derives from a Louisiana State statute that goes back to 1926. We are bound by the same ethical standards as a state employee. What that means is, we do not have to file a financial disclosure document, but it does mean that we cannot and will not accept meals, tickets, gifts, or any other type of gratuity. We know many people in the community, and some may come before us. If we have any financial interest in a certain project or in the entity before us, then we are required to recuse ourselves from any discussion or voting. It would be expected that the commission would also leave the room. If an immediate family member causes such a conflict, then the Commissioner would also abide by that rule. As an example, Commissioner Nizo, tonight, has a conflict, and he will recuse himself when we talk about one of the issues. The commission is supported by a bright and knowledgeable staff that is dedicated to doing what is in the best interests of the parish and its citizens. In most cases, after a public hearing is held on an issue, we recommend -- we don't approve, we recommend approval or denial to the Parish Council. The final decision for that approval or denial on those matters rests with the Council. There are important planning and zoning ideas and concepts that need to be discussed in this parish. Rather than have a few Commissioners do so in a subcommittee meeting, we believe it is most important that we all, all the Commissioners present, do it in this room, in front of you and the TV audience, all the citizens of the parish. We want you to know what we are thinking. Citizens will have an opportunity to give input at our meetings on issues before a public hearing is held on them, as well as when the hearing itself is held. I understand that some of those issues will be very important to some individuals and may result in an emotional response. There is a caution I would give in that regard. You may certainly criticize any pending decision or concept we are discussing in the three minutes allotted to you. However, you will not be allowed to criticize individuals or make any type of personal attack against staff members or Commissioners. We believe that we are -- what we are tasked to do for this parish and you, the citizens, is very important to the future of this great parish. Our commitment to the Parish Council and to all of our fellow citizens is that we will do our utmost to make decisions that are in the best interest of the parish. Thank you. It is time now, if there are any -- anyone signed up, for public comment for items that are on the agenda but are not part of the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anybody that has signed for that? Okay, then we will dispense with the public comment period. We have several items that are coming up for either -- excuse me, I'm sorry. I can't even read my own notes. I would entertain a motion for approval or denial of the minutes of the March 14th Planning Commission meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
And a second?
I second.
Did you catch those? Okay, Mr. Callender and Mr. Bishop seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is passed. We will now have public hearings on some matters. The first public hearing is to approve or deny the following preliminary subdivision The shadows at Man Shack. Staff, would you like to explain, in general, what it is before us?
This subdivision is located just north of Louisiana Highway 42, just off of McCroy Road. They're proposing 158 lots within the one unit or three units per acre, which is within the residential medium zoning category that it's within. The developer is providing sidewalks along one side of the streets, on every side of the streets, and is also providing a common area that they're going to provide some play areas for. And they have submitted a drainage report, which has been approved by Engineering Department, and a traffic report, which has been -- which came back insufficient, mainly due to the situation on Louisiana Highway 42, mostly because of the reason why it's two lanes. And currently, we're recommending approval contingent on the following, that they construct the -- because of the traffic report coming back insufficient, that they construct only one unit per acre on six -- since they have 60 acres, that'd be 60 units before the construction on Louisiana Highway 42 is -- has started.
I'm sorry, would you state that again?
Sorry.
It's all right.
Basically, we're recommending that they be allowed to build one unit per acre until the construction for Louisiana Highway 42 has started, which is basically, that recommendation's coming from the traffic -- from the traffic report. And from the Engineering Department saying that the traffic council are inefficient until those improvements have taken place. Another contingency that we're showing is basically showing that phasing on the plat. They've shown it on an alternative paper that's in the packet, but we want them to show it on the plat to make sure that they're showing which lots will be constructed -- which 60 lots will be constructed before the construction on Louisiana Highway 42 begins place. We're also saying that because the major -- not the majority, but there's a small portion of the subdivision that's located within the floodplain, that they put a statement on the plat saying that they will only use 18 inches of fill. The rest of it will have to be elevated in order to maintain the floodplain standards and mitigate within the floodplain. Another contingency that we had on it was for them to construct a dry line for the sewage. Currently, their sewer plant is located in the rear of the subdivision, and because that area is slated for a regional sewer system, we're at -- we would like them to build a dry line from that sewer plant to the front of the subdivision, so they can connect into that regional sewer system once it becomes available in that area. And finally, they specify that they're going to provide a play area for -- within that -- within their common space, but they don't specify what kind. We would like them to specify what kind of.
For the benefit of those here, if a developer agrees to a certain build out, phased build out, how is that enforced?
Well, we'll put a -- the phasing will be placed on the plat, and they won't be -- they'll only be allowed to -- because that statement will be placed on the plat, when they come in for their building permits, they won't be allowed to proceed past that 60 units until the construction of Louisiana Highway 42 has started.
Thank you. Is there someone here from McLenn and Associates?
My name is Ross Berthalot. I'm the developer for the project, managing member of Berthalot Holdings LLC, which is applicant. I do have Billy Taylor with McLenn and Associates here tonight, as well as Nick Ferlito, who is the Traffic Engineer with Neil Schaefer. I'm proposing a development of 158 residential lots on 60 acres of land off McCroy II Road. I'm buying the land from the members of the McCroy family, who have owned it for several decades, and who are here tonight in support of my development plan. The property is currently zoned for up to 180 residential lots, as Jeff said. That's three lots per acre. My plan calls for 158 lots and 10 acres of green space, recreation area, including a multipurpose playing field. At the parish's recommendation, the project will be phased based on the construction of the widening of LA Highway 42. Both McCroy I Road and McCroy II Road meet the parish's required size and width for ingress and egress to my proposed development. The first phase will be 60 lots and will include drainage improvements and a retention pond for the entire 158-lot development. Once Phase 1 is complete, there will be less water runoff from the 60-acre property than it's currently experienced in the area, due to the drainage improvements and the retention that I'm going to be creating. The lot sizes proposed are consistent with the existing zoning of the property and with the neighboring subdivisions of Meadow Ridge and La Sheneer. I will restrict the homes to be built on the lots that I'm developing to single-family, detached homes, with no less than 1,700 square feet minimum living area. Those minimums are bigger than Meadow Ridge and La Sheneer. I'll also require the homes to be built with exterior materials consisting of at least 60 percent stucco and brick. Lots and homes will be similar in look and size to the adjacent Meadow Ridge and La Sheneer subdivisions, except that my minimum is a little bit bigger than their minimums will be. I'll require the builders of the homes on the interior lots, as Jeff said, to install sidewalks, so that the area residents can have a walking path around the entire subdivision into the playing fields and the common area. As I have already heard some complaints at our meeting last night at the library about the existing speeding on McCroy I Road, I'm willing to discuss contributing to enforcement efforts to decrease the speeding on that road. Lastly, and most importantly, I've worked closely with the Planning Department and have consulted with Councilman Chris Lor in creating this development plan. I'm very pleased to say that this development does not require any waivers or exceptions from the parish development ordinances and is in full compliance with all parish requirements and recommendations. With the addition of the phasing requirement, the sidewalks, and the playing fields, I'm actually exceeding the requirements of the current parish ordinances. I would like to say one comment about the fill plan with the 18 inches. We plan on doing fill mitigation for those lots instead. Pier and beam homes under the parish ordinance that would go on top of 18 inches of fill is not as desirable as doing a fill mitigation taken from the site. So that would be the only item that we will choose not to agree with the parish's recommendation on. I'm asking for your approval for this development tonight. If there are any questions for me or my engineers, we'd be happy to answer them for you at this time. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a question for the staff. Is mitigation a normal response to the requirement of -- about piers?
It's required if you're in a floodplain to mitigate above that, above what your base flood level is, and they can either use fill, and we're just recommending that they use a combination of fill and pier and beams for their construction.
Any questions for this gentleman from Commission?
Ross, do you guys have a -- you have your preliminary plat finished already with the phasing that's on it, the 60 lots?
Yes.
So it's not just a separate sheet anymore?
No. I think that was going to be made -- the shading was going to be put on the preliminary plat that would be ultimately approved. Yes. Also, on that plat is a note about the phasing requirement with LA Highway 42.
On the preliminary plat?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further comment from the staff?
For clarity, you're accepting staff recommendation with one exception. Is that correct?
Yes, and what we're planning on doing instead is normal and standard. It's just that I believe the staff recommends the alternative. Does that make sense? We have maybe 5 or 10 percent of the property that's in the flood zone. That's all we're talking about. The rest of it's well out of the flood zone. It wouldn't be affected by that requirement.
If you notice in your packet, one of the things that we've done, being that we're working with an entirely new commission, is we listed the principles that were in the 2003 master plan. And one of those principles simply says, discourage subdivision development within the 100-year floodplain. Being that 60 to 65 percent of our parishes in the floodplain, we recognize that there are going to be developments that happen in the floodplain. We think that one of the things that we can do to mitigate that development is to reduce the amount of fill that we put in those areas. And Mr. Berthalot is correct. It has been the standard practice to simply fill the sites and then mitigate it with detention, dig out ponds, you know, basically offset what you fill with what you take out. And we're simply stating that there may be another way that this commission chooses to deal with fill mitigation moving forward, and that's to limit the amount of fill that we put on these lots that are in the 100-year floodzone and require those houses to be built differently. We're not saying that there's a code that requires that. We're just saying there's another way that it could be done. And based on that principle that we put in your packet, that's how we justify that recommendation.
Question, the fill mitigation that he proposes, does that have any negative effect on the drainage to neighboring properties?
No, sir. He would not be allowed to affect that at all. His engineer will be required to meet all of the drainage requirements that are in the code. That's basically a pre-post. Everything that the water that leaves today has to leave at the same rate after everything is developed, which includes the fill mitigation if they choose to go that route.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. All right, then we will have public comment in the order in which they were signed in.
Yes, my name is Charles Phelps. I live on McCroy I Road. I'll be directly affected by the traffic coming out of this subdivision. When it's finally finished, that's 300-plus cars on my road in front of my house. That means my animals, my dog, my cat, whatever I got, my grandchildren cannot go in the front at all. It's dangerous enough now, like it is, because I know the speed limit's 35 miles an hour. Nobody goes 35 miles an hour. If they're not doing 60, they're not moving at all. I hate being like that, and I've seen, over the last three years, two policemen there checking for speed traps or whatever. And it's just not getting done. I've replaced my mailbox five times. I've got it set back from the road more than a -- well, they got to come off the road to get to me. But I still, you know, that's 300 more cars twice a day. That road can't handle it. You know, I know it's built to, he says, correct specifications for that size, but people, that's too many cars for that small of a road. Unless they put, like, speed humps, that would work great. But I understand there's a legal problem with that, but got to do something to slow them down. If they could slow them down, maybe, but still, that's, like I say, that's better than 300 cars. Well, was it 1.8, they say, for a subdivision? Say 290 cars, then, okay? That's still a lot of traffic going down a road not designed to handle that much traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Brian Abody.
Thank you. My name is Brian Abody. I live at 18245 Van Broussard Road. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Ross Berthalot for having a preliminary meeting yesterday. It was very helpful. With that being said, I would like to bring up four points that I think are very relevant in this situation. Two of them more so than the other two. One, this subdivision does not have a direct access route to Highway 42. Most of our major neighborhoods of this side in Ascension Parish have a direct access to a major thoroughfare. This one routes through an existing neighborhood. And besides that, this, as it's currently designed, has a single egress. So should something happen, there is only one way out of this subdivision, as per planned. The second two, I think are much more serious, and they're addressed in some of these documents, but I just want to make sure everybody's aware of them. There is a significant problem with the Cotton Bayou watershed, which backs up to this development. I have a litany of emails here from residents, and Mr. Bill Rue acknowledging the fact that the bridge on David Drive needs to be replaced to facilitate the drainage, and the entire Cotton Bayou needs to be cleaned from Van Broussard Road to the confluence of Bayou Man Shack. That has not been done. To show you the impact of that, in the past two weeks, we had a frontal passage. We had some rain. I could get a canoe and launch it from my driveway, travel 390 feet up through my neighbor's lot, turn around, go back through his lot, go around the front yard of my house, through the backyard of my neighbor's house, and over to John Broussard Road to visit my friend. That's the amount of water we had in the last two weeks, because the drainage is in such deplorable position. Now, Mr. Ross can say that what he's doing, he will not have any additional runoff, but I guarantee you, any resident that has lived in there for this amount of time will beg to differ with him. Okay? It is a horrible situation, and again, well-known by Mr. Bill Rue, and we haven't been able to address that yet. This will have a negative impact on that situation. The other one is, and I just want to make folks aware of what the assessment done by the parish says, and the -- again, this is our guiding principles, which in fact, I think are very well-done. Traffic along Highway 42 is already at peak, and per the Engineering Department, any increase in traffic will make the situation even worse. It has been determined by the Engineering Department that any additional increase.
Sir, I'm sorry, that's your three minutes.
I'm sorry.
That's your three minutes. We have, I think we have a ton of people. We understand the issue.
That's unfortunate. I think this was very important. Hopefully, you all have read it, because this will turn our situation into a living nightmare while the construction on 42 is being done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Steve Schmickpepper.
I live on David Drive at the north end of the subdivision. I'm not exactly sure where they're going to discharge their wastewater until the sewer system's hooked up. And as far as the traffic, I think I agree with this other gentleman, that the traffic is bad enough now, and it's going to be a nightmare. I'm worried if emergency services are going to be able to have access if something happens. And La Sheneer and Meadow Ridge weren't designed as thoroughfares, but that's what they're going to be, because when the line queues up to 42, people are going to cut through those subdivisions, especially La Sheneer, since they have their own access to 42. My water pressure's already not all that good. I know that they're going to have 8-inch lines in the shadows, but I'd like to see 8-inch lines carried all the way back to Man Shack Estates, because we're on 4-inch lines right now. We don't have any fire hydrants, and some of the homes are serviced by 2-inch lines. And again, the Cotton Bayou flooding situation is well-known by the parish, and nothing's been done. And shadows looks good on paper, but I really don't know if that's going to work out. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
James Shaw.
Hi, my name is James Shaw. I live on 39019 David Drive. The property backs up to the northern edge of the subdivision. Of course, the traffic's going to be an issue, but my greatest concern is flood. My house is partially in that 100-year floodzone, and I firmly believe that this is going to affect the amount of flooding we're going to see in that area, for me and the couple neighbors that butt up next to me. The emails that were mentioned earlier, saying that the David Drive Bridge had to be razed and cleared. It also did specify not only clearing, but enlarging the Cotton Bayou drainage area. Cleaning's one thing, but actually going and enlarging it, that was recommended back in 2009, and there was issues with being able to attain right-of-ways at that point. So it was known that there's a big problem back there for quite some time. If you, excuse me, if you take a look at the map that's shown from the Army Corps of Engineer, multiple times through this, the paperwork that was sent out, they mentioned that on the northern edge of the property, there's wetland areas. But on that map, that color-coded map provided by the Corps, they don't show that wetland area in there, and it seems to be negated. And the whole northern portion of this development feeds into Cotton Bayou. And the maps, I think, I'm no pro at reading those maps, but I think they show some topographical lines showing all that water draining back to that direction. So I'd have a tough time believing that we're going to be able to maintain the same amount of runoff. Without all the vegetation, we've got lots of trees, lots of vegetation. It's a wild and overrun area that really slows the water down. We won't have that anymore. I'm going to let everybody else address the traffic issues, but one thing I would like to point out is where McCroy II and McCroy I intersect, there is a 90-degree blind curve that goes up to the Van Broussard Road. That stop sign's often dissipate, as is. I come through that curve every day. I've had quite a few close calls, and I drive very conservatively. So I think that could be an issue with traffic as well. And I believe that's all I have to address right now. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Ken Lemoyne.
Does the applicant have any further comments?
I just want to say first, I understand these concerns. I heard many of them last night, as well, at the meeting that we held at the library. You know, to get to this point, to introduce this to you guys today, has been, it's a long process in this parish. And I think it's good. It's expensive, but it's good. Because when you get to this point, you've already vetted out a lot of these issues. And in working with Ricky and Jeff and the staff, we've been through all of this. The drainage was designed so that it is better than what it is now. The 60 acres that I'm responsible for are going to drain better than they do now. Not sure, the question about the wetlands, how do you make this deal? This is the official map from the Corps. This is the northern boundary, and there are no wetlands, so I'm not sure what that gentleman may have been referring to. But on this, on this 60 acres, the only wetlands line is this old ditch that runs in here, this piece right here, which we're not going to touch, and then these two small spots. Again, Ricky and I went back and forth on several iterations of the layout after my engineer had already designed one, and we came up with what you see now. It does only have one entrance. It is tied to Karen Drive, which is an existing road coming out of Meadow Ridge. But that's how, that's what we ended up with. It's not to say it can't be changed. To get two entrances with the distance between Karen Drive and McCroy I, we may have some issues. issues. So Ricky and I kind of ended up with the plaque that you see now. And that's all I have to say. I think Billy wanted to maybe address some things.
Billy Taylor with Macklin and Associates. I just want to address one thing I asked about earlier with the field mitigation. Just want to make clear, we're not asking for an exception or a waiver or anything in the drainage ordinance. I mean, there's a specific section about field mitigation. If you feel the flood plain, you can't get to take out, like you said. I think we're taking out two yards for every yard we put in, and that's part of the drainage study, which was reviewed, and we have included that plan. So to make it clear that we're not asking for any exceptions. Thank you.
Staff, do you have any further comments?
Just to address the design issue, when the original plaque came to us, the access road into the subdivision, just imagine it was centered from where it is now, going towards McCrory Road One. And the issue that we saw there is, you are going to be dumping an entire subdivision of houses out onto McCrory Road, and those houses, as they currently sit today, have driveways that back out onto McCrory Road. And so we felt that a redesign of that area was needed so that the road lined up with the existing road, to not have cars exiting the subdivision where other cars are backing out of their own personal driveways. And you are correct, it would be better to have two access points into this subdivision, but typically, you want them in different directions. This subdivision doesn't have that luxury. It's surrounded on the other three sides by existing houses. It doesn't own access to another direction. And in the foreseeable future, those houses aren't going anywhere. So to provide a stubout to somebody's backyard just doesn't make a lot of sense. And Mr. Berthlot and Mr. Taylor are correct, we looked at that spacing between the primary access and where we would put a second access out to McCrory, we're going to have the same issue. A drive's going to come out backing up to somebody's driveway, and it's going to be close to that intersection of McCrory Road One and McCrory Road Two, which we didn't think was an acceptable solution.
And your recommendation is to approve the preliminary plat with the conditions that you stated?
Yes, sir. The justification came down to, if the developer came to us today with a development that was one unit per acre, if they drew sixty one-acre lots, do we believe that that subdivision would be approved today? And I think the answer is yes. I think that that would be something that, I don't even know that we would have the argument. We're still going to have a traffic argument. I'm not going to argue that, because we are talking about additional cars on roads that are already overburdened, and when you get out to forty-two, it's bad. But we felt at this time that limiting the filing to sixty lots, which is one unit per acre, until such time that forty-two is under construction is a happy medium, because he is allowed up to three units an acre based on his zoning. And we feel that once forty-two is under construction, that that will open up the availability to go into his second or third filing, however many filings he's going to do, because that will minimize that left-turn movement. What we noticed in the traffic study was that the delays were significant for people turning out of McCrory Road One onto forty-two, which is why we limited the filing number.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Jim, a couple of questions and comments. Limiting the initial filing to sixty properties, it's going to take some time for that to develop and for those houses to be sold, given the current housing climate. What's the schedule for Highway forty-two? I'm thinking there won't be sixty houses contributing to traffic for at least a year. But what's the current schedule for improvements on Highway forty-two?
There is no current schedule. They're still waiting on funding, as we understand it. But the note reads, should, there's some other lines, but it gets to, "Should Louisiana DOTD or the parish fail to begin construction of the widening of LA Highway forty-two on or before January first, two thousand and fifteen, then the developer and/or his assigns may request that the parish grant approval for construction of the remaining approved infrastructure and lots shown on this plat contingent on any proposed mitigation measures by the developer for traffic concerns based on the rules and ordinances that are in place at the time of the request." And what that means is, between now and two thousand and fifteen, I'll tell you, we're working on a transportation plan right now, that we will have measures put in place that if DOTD has not begun construction on forty-two, we will have the ability to request that McCrory Road One be accommodated or redesigned to accommodate left-turn movements, so that we're not seeing a four-hundred-and-eighty-second delay for people turning left onto Highway forty-two. That does not affect the people turning right. So that note simply states, sixty lots until January first, two thousand and fifteen. If forty-two hasn't begun construction, he can request a start, but we're going to put the mitigative measures on how we're going to improve McCrory Road One to accommodate that. You know, I agree with Mr. Tifisi that sixty lots could take a while. Something could happen, and they could sell overnight. We can't predict the future, but we did feel that was unfair to leave it open-ended. That's why we selected that date. We feel very strongly that forty-two could receive funding in this legislative session, and fingers crossed, we start fixing that road that's been needed to be repaired for thirty years.
There's also a comment about wastewater discharge. I think there's a package plant-
Yes, sir.
-along with this subdivision. Wasn't that the answer to that question?
The discharge will have to discharge to a publicly maintained drainage canal, but we want to condition it so that they install-
No, I mean, I'm talking about wastewater now.
Yes, sir. The wastewater plant will have to discharge to a publicly maintained canal, but we want to put a servitude in place, and we want the developer to install a dry line. So if and when we do get sewer in place, we are going to be putting a sewer line down forty-two. If they extend that sewer line down McCrory Road, we want the developer to have the ability to tie this subdivision and that plant into that line.
One other comment about the Cotton Bayou. A few people made comments and had concerns about Cotton Bayou flood situation, and we're all sensitive to flooding wherever we live in Ascension. It's my thinking, in my experience with this sort of development, is that it's isolated in terms of its mitigation on flood impacts. So you take the current property, you study it, you look at its qualities in terms of retaining rainwater. You know, we're just talking about rainfall now. We're not talking about backwater flooding, which I think is our biggest problem. But when you're talking about rainfall, this property has a certain quality in terms of retaining rainfall. So the mitigation that's in place, the retention pond and other factors accommodate the fact that we're putting streets and concrete slabs and roofs and other things in, that would lessen the ability of the property to retain the rainwater. So we have a mitigating factor. Also, I think the mitigation, the retention pond is also accommodating the fact that we're raising some of the, we're putting fill in the property. So we're therefore reducing the flood plain. So we're mitigating that. It sounds to me like the problem with the flooding, though, is backwater flooding. There's a lot, when you get an intense rainfall of a long duration, I'm not sure that it would matter whether this property's developed or not. Just from my engineering background and perspective, I think we'd see the same results around the adjacent properties as we would if this property were developed or not, when we have really intense rainfall events. I'm satisfied that the mitigation measures would take care of rainfall, would balance what's being built versus what's currently there. But there's not, you can't, we can't in this meeting, and the parish can't really address the problem of backwater flooding when there's really intense rainfalls. I think I'm satisfied that this wouldn't necessarily increase the problem that people are experiencing in that area when there's an intensive event, so.
Do you have another comment? Because Ms. James has one, too.
The discussion I had with Bill Rue and with Ben Laurie, the parish engineer, this afternoon, was just of that nature. We can ensure through our drainage ordinance that this subdivision will not further impact that already problem situation. We can control the outfall from this development. And everything I'm hearing is, what was iterated through Bill Rue this afternoon, is they had a problem acquiring right-of-way, which they need to acquire to widen the bayou. They need to clean the whole thing out, but people had a problem with removing some of the trees that they like back in the bayou. So there is an issue with the Cotton Bayou and the bridge that's on David Road that all needs to be looked into, resolved. All we can tell you is that the subdivision ordinance and the development code and the drainage ordinance, the things that we're responsible for in this meeting, we will not make that situation worse.
Okay. Beth?
I just wanted to dovetail on Ricky's comments, that on Highway forty-two, currently DOTD is talking to landowners, and they've already done all the appraisals. I mean, that project is moving forward. There is funding. Congressman Cassidy is following it. There's a lot of pressure on our state legislators to get this road enlarged and widened as quickly as possible to help the traffic in the morning. I mean, I live off of forty-two, so I experience it almost on a daily basis. And I also wanted, really, the people who are here in the audience who have concerns, we have a stormwater department that goes out and actually measures outfall in different areas. So we're monitoring ourselves on what we're regulating in terms of what we're contributing to stormwater issues. And we are making sure that from the get-go in these plans, that we are not contributing in any way to anything any more effluent or, you know, outfalls that we are legally bound to adhere to.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions or comments from the commission? I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny the preliminary subdivision plat for the shadows at Manchac. I move approval.
I'll second that motion.
Any opposed?
Well, can I have a clarification? The motion includes all the recommendations of staff?
Yes. Okay. Would you restate the motion, then?
I move that this, that we recommend approval of the preliminary plat contingent on the staff's comments that are listed under staff recommendations.
Okay.
And I'll resecond.
Mr. Bishop, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The second item for tonight is the approval or denial of the preliminary subdivision plat for River Landing. Staff, would you care to summarize?
Yes. River Landing is also located just off of Louisiana Highway forty-two, but it does have direct access to-
Speak a little louder, if you would. I know it's hard in the audience.
Come on, let everybody leave.
Yeah. I want to give them a couple of minutes.
But the subdivision is located a little bit further down Louisiana Highway forty-two as our last subdivision was. It is also a residential medium, which means it can have three units per acre. This subdivision specifically has a little less than three units per acre, with a total of sixty-nine lots altogether. So it conforms to the density standards within our ordinance. The developer is providing sidewalks within the subdivision and a half an acre of green space. And the required traffic study was approved, and the required drainage study was, they're still requesting that servitudes be shown on the plat. The applicant has submitted a plat with those servitudes being shown, and so as long as those servitudes are in place, the drainage study is being, or the engineering department has approved the drainage study as well. Our recommendation is for approval contingent, basically, on the same thing as the last time. This subdivision is located within a huge portion of it, it's located within the flood plain. So we're requesting that, or we're recommending that they only use eighteen inches of fill like the previous subdivision was as well. And there's also a statement on the plat that we're asking for them to remove. But with those two contingencies, we're recommending approval for the subdivision.
And sir, I assume you're representing the applicant?
Yes, sir. My name is Derek Murphy of Quality Engineering and Surveying. We are asking for your approval tonight on River Landing, a residential subdivision off of Highway forty-two, near Port Benson area. So we on the other end of forty-two in Ascension Parish. We have sixty-nine lots. Looking at the recommendations from the staff, the one that I'm okay with, definitely right-of-way to be revoked, the existing Vernon Causey Road is a ten-foot-wide little blacktop road that services one lot in the back. And it's not technically a right-of-way, but it has some maintenance. So I'm assuming that's the reason they want the right-of-way to be revoked taking off, because it's only a servitude. Of course, the servitude's requested by engineering department, that's no problem. That's a typical type servitude we put through there. And of course, the third one, I do take exception to with the eighteen inches of fill, because we are providing floodplain mitigation. But in this case, also because of the road that we have in here, according to the drainage ordinance, has to be one foot below, maximum one foot below the base flood elevation. So now you're going to have a curb and gutter road above some of these lots. These lots do take some fill. They are in a flood zone. We have provided a large enough pond for the mitigation calculations to work. You know, in the ordinance, like the previous engineer said, does talk about floodplain mitigation. I do know that the staff is trying to limit drainage and understand that. But then you have two ordinances, our recommendations now clashing with ordinances, as you're going to have a curb and gutter road that is supposed to accept the drainage from the lots, above the lots, if you don't do that. So you're going to have some drainage issues there. The drainage study was approved by the parish. We are showing that we are taking some property from the west of us and transferring it through our property across Highway forty-two to Amet River. We are putting a large amount of drainage in here. Our traffic study shows that it will have no significant impact in the area at the Vernon Causey Road, and we're going to be improving the existing Vernon Causey with a standard twenty-seven-foot-wide curb and gutter road. We are not asking for any averances. We meet the subdivision ordinances and tonight request your approval with, but not with the staff's recommendation of the eighteen inches maximum fill. Thank you. I'm here to answer any questions that y'all might have.
Staff response to what he said? Vinnie? None? Okay. Questions? Comments? Commission?
Yeah, I have one question. On your sewer, you're stating that you're going to attempt to utilize the Beechwood Estates Community Sewer System if it's approved. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If it's not approved, you're stating that you're going to use the lot sixty-nine, I believe?
That's correct.
Okay. In the event it's not approved, is there going to be an attempt to use Beechwood along with a smaller unit on sixty-nine? Or are y'all planning on using the unit to handle the new subdivision completely?
It'd be either or.
Either or.
It'll be a whole new plant that'll handle the sixty-eight lots, or we can go and upgrade the Beechwood and use that facility. But it's not going to be a combination of, no, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Jackie?
I'm going to assume that you will be or have applied for Section 404 permit from the Corps of Engineers, considering this is wetland determination?
Yes, sir, we have.
Other questions from the commission? I had one for the staff. Is there a minimum amount of green space that's typically required? I saw this was a half acre.
Our ordinance gives a suggestion on how much acreage they should provide, and I think I had it written in here. But I mean, it's just suggesting there's no requirement on what they actually have to provide.
Okay. And a half acre is okay? Is that large enough?
It's really up to you guys at that point, since it's not a requirement.
Okay. Thank you. Are there, thank you, sir. Are there any people that have signed up for public comment? Okay. Any other questions or comments?
One question of the developer. Ken, please. How much, exactly how much fill will you require? Will you be placing on these lots that are within the floodplain now?
In some areas, we will be up, I think, a maximum of four feet.
Four feet?
Yes, sir. And that's why, if you look at like sixty-three through sixty-nine, there are deeper lots which allow us to make the transition back to natural ground and do some things right there, because that's where some of the low area is. that's where some of the low area is.
And so, you're taking quite a lot away from the, in theory, away from the existing floodplain. So, your mitigation methods here, your mitigation or your retention pond accommodates that?
Yes, sir.
And I guess I'm asking the staff, is that what was looked at when this was approved? That his current plan for filling the lots with four feet of fill in some cases is mitigated by the retention pond?
A good engineer is never going to present us a plan that doesn't accommodate that. I'm just going to suggest that we feel, as there are alternative construction methods that could be utilized in parts of the parish that are heavily impacted by the 100-year flood. It's up to this body whether or not you want to make the recommendation to require that or to allow the engineer to, like you said, fill those lots four or five feet and put the slabs on grade. He will engineer it so that it works. Once again, our drainage ordinance is strong enough that the pre-post will match, the fill mitigation will match. We have every assurance, based on other subdivisions that we've seen in this parish, that they can make the math work. We're just suggesting there may be another way to do it.
Could you speak to the issue of why the... If the fill is not above the road, I mean, will that cause drainage problems?
I am not an engineer.
Okay.
I would argue, however, that if the lots aren't completely filled with four feet of fill, you're probably going to have less water that needs to drain into that roadway system. Once again, there could be another way to engineer the project that doesn't need that. You know, I don't know. I'm not an engineer. I can't tell you how to... Maybe the houses are designed higher, and so, all you're draining is the rooftop and the driveway at that point. The ground doesn't need to be drained, right? So, you know, there's an engineering solution for everything. The simple one in Ascension Parish has always been, fill the property and drain it to a pond.
I appreciate those comments, Mr. Compton. And this body hasn't before now addressed this issue. Maybe it is something we should look at. There are different ways to build homes. I'm not sure we want to make an example of this project to do this, but I think it is something that we should address. And that is to take a hard look at what we do allow in the parish in terms of fill for development properties. I'm not sure I'd want to build a house on four-foot pier. Maybe I would want to build a house on a four-foot pier. It might be a good idea. But I'm not sure, if this development meets all of the requirements that is currently required by the parish and by the Planning and Zoning Commission, I'm not sure we want to make an example of it. Those are just my comments, Mr. Chairman.
And as far as I know, this development with the fill, because of the mitigation, mitigation hasn't always been there in the parish. It is part of the drainage ordinances as the drainage ordinance has evolved. So, I won't say it's fairly new, but it hadn't been there the whole time. So, it does mitigate the floodplain. It does help keep from pushing water downstream. So, that is in place for a reason. It's in place to put fill in the flood zone. And that is in the ordinances to do that. Now, in the future, if Ascension Parish government wills it and the ordinance has changed, then of course, we would know that upfront as we're developing this. To put a burden on this piece of property, you know, above and beyond or different than what's normally customary, I guess we'd say, and outside the ordinances, to me, you know, is not right. However, this is the body that makes that, will make that determination.
Not to put you on the spot, but I will. At our last approval, we approved it with all the staff recommendations, which included the piers. And now, it sounds like you're leaning towards approving it without the piers. Is that...
No, I haven't moved to approve it yet. I just wanted to make comments about...
Okay. I just want to make sure.
I believe this commission should, in the future, address this, whether or not we want to approve this with what is being proposed. That's why I asked the question. How much fill are you talking about? And four feet of fill is quite a lot of fill. I don't think you can... You know, if it was 24 inches of fill instead of 18, that might be reasonable. But to suggest that you're going to use piers instead of fill when you need four feet of fill, I'm not sure is a reasonable request.
Thank you.
I like the idea, by the way, don't get me wrong, about using some alternative method of construction, using piers when you can. I'm not sure in this case it makes a lot of sense. And I think it would be very onerous on the developer to make that recommendation.
Yes, sir.
Once again, we are simply making a recommendation. If you don't like the 18 inches, you can change the 18 inches to some other dimension. I'll just state for the record that my house is on piers. I'm 42 inches above my elevation, but my piers are only about 24 inches. The timber takes up the rest of that, and it's all faceted out. So, there are alternative construction methods to make the houses not look so tall. But I would argue, four feet of fill is a heck of a lot of fill over, what, a third of this property? You know, if you change that 18 inches to a higher, you know, perhaps you find a happy medium at 24, perhaps at a happy medium at 30. I don't know. We started at 18 because we think when we start revising the code for fill mitigation, that's probably where we're going to end up. So, we don't have pyramids of dirt all over this parish with buildings perched on top of them.
Any other comments or questions? Entertaining a motion for approval or denial of the preliminary subdivision plat for River Landing.
I move for approval, conjunction with staff recommendation, as well as applicant's response to seeking Section 404 continued permit for wetland determination.
Okay. It's been moved that we approve with the staff recommendations and the filing and approval of the 404. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Does that... Question?
Question.
Does that mean we're going to leave in no more than 18 inches of fill, which means in some cases, he'd have to put two and a half feet of something else, pier.
A fill up here?
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Mr. Calvert?
Do I hear a second for the motion?
A second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Mr. Jaffesi opposes? I'm sorry, Mr. Sanji?
A second.
Second. The motion is carried. Next is a public hearing to approve or deny the final subdivision plat for Pelican Crossing, third filing lots 173 through 250.
Mr. Chairman, I move that be recused from this discussion?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Paul will be drinking coffee while the rest of us are here discussing this. Staff?
The applicant is... This application is for Pelican Crossing. It's the third filing of the subdivision. The applicant is requesting a final plat, which means that they've had the preliminary plat approved, and now they've gone through and they've begun construction on the infrastructure, on their roadways and on their drainage. And once that's all complete, they can get the final plat approved and begin selling lots at that point. This phase of this subdivision is 81 lots. The preliminary plat was approved back in 1998. It has had a first filing and a second filing, and it's coming through with its third filing. We are recommending approval of the final plat, contingent on them getting their infrastructure and all the roadways and their drainage inspected by our engineering department and approved by our engineering department, which has not happened yet, but I know they're on their way. And once that approval has taken place, we recommend approval for that. And also, just as a side note, basically, we just need them to show the bearings and distance for that roadway that extends down to Highway 44. We need to have, we show that on the plat, just so we know where the roadway lies. But other than those two contingencies, we recommend approval.
Okay. Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Mickey Robertson with MR Engineering and Surveying, here tonight representing Pelican Crossing LLC. Excuse me. As Mr. Loonberger said, this is the third filing in a three-filing subdivision. The plat was approved for this filing in 2006. We have since, actually, in the last six or eight months, the market has really picked up. They've had a lot of success with the second filing, so they're ready to put some more lots on the market. They have constructed all the improvements. We had a final inspection about three weeks ago. There was a small punch list of items, a couple of testing reports that we have since provided to the engineering department. We are awaiting a final reinspection of those couple of items that were left. But tonight, we would ask for approval contingent upon us addressing, you know, getting final approval from DPW. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from the commission? Okay. Is there anyone here that signed up for public comment?
Yes. Robert Redden.
Hello. How you doing? I'm here speaking on behalf of the residents of Pelican Crossing subdivision.
Excuse me. Would you go ahead and identify yourself officially, so they pick you up?
Oh, sorry. Robert Redden.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm here speaking on behalf of the homeowners of Pelican Crossing, and our objection to the final plat is the connection street that connect River Ridge and the two subdivisions We have a lot of the residents that showed up today for support. Could y'all please stand? Thank y'all for coming. And there's been a lot of petitions that were signed to try to get this connection street blocked because of several issues that we have, one being traffic. Can I get this... How do I turn this on? The show? It's on? It comes up? Okay. See if I can get this situated right here. This being Pelican Crossing right here, the connection street is right here. For us to leave out of Pelican Crossing, we would have to make this route come all the way back around, come here to get out on 22. I don't know why this was split, but this is only two tenths of a mile, so it's not a big reason for us to have to go that way, to have to traverse an existing neighborhood. The other reason is we have this Long Straightaway Street right here that brings us out to 44. And we're very concerned about traffic there. A lot of the people in the subdivision were worried about crime. We have four ways out now. We also have two inlets and outlets in both subdivisions. And as far as I can see, it meets the neighborhood requirements. Let's see what else I have here. We've signed petitions, and we've had discussions with everyone in the neighborhood. None of the residents in Pelican Crossing are for this. None of the... From what we've heard, the residents in River Ridge are also not for it. So, we would like to get a variance on the final plat, to have either a breakaway gate put up to make room for services, emergency services and such. Or some people have suggested taking it out completely, which I don't know if that's an option. But we would please like y'all to consider that. We believe this affects the quality of life in our subdivision. We believe that the two neighborhoods are not compatible, two totally different developments. River Ridge does not have any sidewalks. Neither does the first filing on the Long Straightaway going 244. We also believe that that's the primary direction of traffic. Thank you for your time. I'll seat my eyes up.
Thank you, sir.
Dempsey Pindorvis.
My name is Dempsey Pindorvis. I have a whole lot invested in Pelican Point, Pelican Crossing, and that part of the, I guess my claim to fame is, I started all that stuff out there. And vindictively, the Planning and Zoning Commission that was here prior to y'all was like to make it as hard as he could make it. What this man said is very correct, very deal, that I'm all for Pelican Crossing's third filing to be approved. They've done a very good job. Their second filing has been nothing but excellent. They didn't want to put the connecting street. The neighbors didn't want the connecting street. The two interconnecting subdivisions, it was jammed down their throat, made them spend the money. Understand, they said the rules are what they are. But I hear the rules, but I see it all over the parish. Those rules are not being enforced, so it would be only, you would be following process if you didn't tie these two subdivisions together. Pelican Crossing has two roads that egress and that enter and go out of 44. River Ridge has two roads that goes out 22. More than likely, a large percent of your traffic going out of River Ridge is going toward Gonzalez. Nobody hardly goes toward Shrento. They're all going to start cutting through the Pelican Crossing. Jeff Wally is not in favor of it connecting, simply because of the fact, we get out of Pelican Crossing, and I'm out of there three or four times a day, that we benefit off of the red light of Pelican Point, which is a 900-acre subdivision, basically, 800-plus acre subdivision that has one interest in and out to the road. But we benefit. If any of y'all ever travel Losmore Road trying to get out in the afternoon at 4:00, it's almost impossible. When you allow this other interest to be connected to River Ridge and people try to enter and egress out of that thing in the afternoon, you're going to have a whole lot of accidents. Jeff Wally, I know he spoke with Mr. Shakespeare, the councilman, that he's not in favor of it. The people of River Ridge don't want it. The people of Pelican Crossing don't want it. There's no reason it ought to not connect. I mean, that it should connect. A big, big factor is if you devalue your property in Ascension Parish, some may near $30 million, because what you're going to do is, any real estate agent will tell you that because these subdivisions connect, the comps in Pelican Crossing are going to be greatly affected by the comps in River Ridge. River Ridge has rental houses. It has a very much lower, not continuity-style house, smaller houses. They have, the fences are falling down. They have sheds in the backyard. We don't need to devalue the people of Pelican Crossing's property because of the values in River Ridge is not up as the same as ours. I appreciate it very, very much if y'all consider that to this developer that we don't tie those streets together, because I really don't think they want to anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kent Shakespeare?
How you doing, fellas? I'm Kent Shakespeare, and I'm the councilman in this district. And first of all, I want to say I appreciate the time and effort you guys have made to be a part of this body. Just a little background to let you know, I agree with all that has been said about what the developer has been doing on Pelican Crossing 2. He's worked very well with the residences in trying to improve the drainage in area and has been very open to doing some different things. And we welcome Pelican Crossing 3. There are some legitimate concerns by the homeowners about conditions of the connections and just based on the ideas about sidewalks and where people are going to go. I was a little troubled by the design and where it funnels the traffic. And so, we would surely like you to make sure, and just take a look at that, is where they funnel this traffic and the safety measures for that. There is no problem with exits on any of the subdivisions involved. Also, the residents have also agreed to be aware of the public safety issues, and we would ask that, as they keep records of if there was any increase in traffic violations, any type of crime or burglaries, because of the openness of this area, that in the future, there would be some consideration of revisiting this connection if they show that there's a public safety concern and as these issues continue to arise. So, we just ask that you take all of this into account as you make your decisions on this. And there was much thought after comments by the residents here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
That's all.
That's it. Comments from the staff? Especially, would you talk about the concept of the breakaway gate?
Lindsay can correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm sure he will.
She, she.
I'm sorry, she will. Sorry, Lindsay.
I am fairly confident you cannot build a gate across a public road. And so let's just imagine, in this imaginary world, we built this gate across a public road, and on a Saturday night, Joe Santamal drives his pickup truck through the gate. Who's responsible to repair it? It's built in the parish right-of-way, so now the parish has to repair this breakaway gate? How many times are we responsible to repair a breakaway gate built in a public right-of-way? You can't gate a public street. You can gate private streets, but you can't gate a public street. In your package, you can see the preliminary plat for Pelican Crossing, and if you examine the maps, you see that there are three more roads that head, I guess it's east, for future When this part of the parish was being developed by Mr. Pindarvis, they knew that this was a big tract of land that had access to 44, it had access to 42, and as they developed it, they had the foresight to show connections, 22. They showed connections between these tracts of land because they knew, over time, that all of these subdivisions would need to access these roads. And it is unfortunate that people have moved into these subdivisions and haven't realized that that was the master plan the whole time. And the subdivision code is very specific. It states, I'll pull it up here real quick. "The arrangements of streets in a subdivision shall provide for the continuation or appropriate projection of existing streets in surrounding areas." That's exactly what they've done here. They've shown the projection to an existing street, and they've tied into it.
Any other comments from the applicant? Nothing? All right. Any other comments or questions from the commission? Other than, everybody's reluctant.
We're very reluctant. That's just, it's...
Then the chair will entertain a motion to either approve or deny the final subdivision plat of Pelican Crossing Third Filing Lots 173 through 253. And I would ask that you incorporate into that motion the specific item of approval also of the connection or not. Let's make that clear in this motion. I'm sorry.
I've done my time. I've heard what this man said, but I don't see what he says. There's not but about 12 places in the parish that you have either breakaway gates or barricades or fences across roads in this parish already, or disallowed to go onto another road because of the traffic or the different clientele, whatever. They're proving the school board property on the Odom property today, now, that doesn't allow it to tie into Swamp Road. Slalom Way on 621, they built a fence across the road. Old Mill at 674 and 73, they got a breakaway gate in the back to quit access from 70 to cook, there's only one, and there's only one interest out of these subdivisions. Seven Oaks and, I believe it's Silverstone, got the road that was connected and blocked off. Denny Mill and Lazy Oaks, the two roads are connected and they're blocked off with bridge timbers. It may be against the law, but it's done repetitiously over and over in this parish already. And that's all we asking is for the same thing, and not to devalue these other people's property by connecting a lower-end subdivision to a medium-end subdivision. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this motion, this includes...
I think we have to address the connection.
Yeah, we need to clarify that because the motion doesn't include either way right now.
I understand, but I think we have to...
Okay, I'm gonna ask, okay.
I think it would be important.
Question maybe of our legal, does this body have the authority to block a road, to stop, to do this?
No, I mean, if this were a private subdivision, we could address, we could address the gates. I'm familiar with some of the examples that Pindarvis gave, but you can't.
We couldn't vote tonight to block that road.
Can I say one thing, please?
Yes, sir.
One of the things that I mentioned before is, we cannot vote to block the road, but you can vote to take a section of road out. That way, it's not blocked.
Counsel. Okay, thank you. I see a quizzical look on your face, too.
In the situation with Slalom Way and that subdivision, there was a revocation of a portion of the road, of the dedication.
Which is a separate, okay, which is a separate hearing.
I'm not sure what's going on in the process. We are of the dedication. I think the, this is the final plat, the preliminary plat's already been approved, and I just don't think this would be appropriate. And that would ultimately be a decision for the council.
Yeah, it's not...
I think that after the construction is complete, they will get a maintenance bond for either one or two years, and when that maintenance bond expires, these roads can be put before the council for acceptance into the maintenance system. If, over the course of that one- or two-year timeframe, we've seen such a dramatic rise in crime or some other issue, the council can take it upon themselves to not accept maybe the last 20 feet of that, which would then create a private strip of land that the HOA could take on and then build a fence or a wall or whatever we want to do. But I think that's the point at which you start to look at whether or not you don't accept this road. Right now, it is my belief that the final plat must match the preliminary plat.
And if someone wanted to try to revoke part of the road, that would be something totally separate from what we're doing. Correct? Yes, thank you. Okay. Well, then with that, the chair will still ask for a motion of approval or denial.
I move approval of the final plat.
Mr. Sanji move for approval. Ms. Calder, seconds. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. The final plat is approved. Next is a public hearing to recommend approval or denial to the parish council of the following servitude revocations. The Marjorie Amis Ronaldson property, tract A1C. And we'll give everybody time to depart before we talk about it.
This item is requesting just a revocation of an, on all-purpose servitude, that's along a property line. We've been told by the property, or by the applicant, that they want to go ahead and pull it.
Pull it?
They want to go ahead and pull the item from the agenda.
Okay. And do we have to have a motion for that?
You might want to check that just to confirm.
Okay, I'm sorry. Did you confirm or deny?
Yes, sir, we'd like to defer this item tonight to the next meeting.
To the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Lindsay, can we, do we have to have a motion, all that, or can we just...
I mean, I'd make a motion, but the applicant requested, so...
Okay. Then just for formality's sake, can I get a motion?
A motion to defer.
I'll second you.
Second, did you get both of those? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next is a public hearing to approve or deny the following overlay zone site plan review, a pre-development meeting for Neighborhood Business Overlay Site Plan for ABB Inc.
This application is for, is for a site that falls within the Neighborhood Business Overlay District, and because of the way it falls, it just, it allows for, currently it has to abide by everything that's within the zoning code, site plan layout and whatnot, but because it's within this overlay, it goes through an actual layer of scrutiny and gets approved by you guys, in addition to getting reviewed by staff. So we've included the guidelines and the ordinance, and we feel that it abides by all the regulations in those ordinances. So we're recommending approval, contingent on the stipulations of the timeframe. And it's my understanding that the timeframe that they're requesting is, is it 24 months from the day? And within those 24 months, they're going to move in the structure and then, get rid of the vote, is that, okay? So they have 24 months to occupy the structure.
I'm sorry, 24 months to what?
24 months to occupy the, to occupy the structure.
Okay.
Question for you, the 24 months that we were, they're requesting that we would possibly approve, is from the date of first occupancy or from the date of approval?
No, it would be from the date of occupancy. Yes, it would be from the date that they get a certificate of occupancy on the building itself.
Okay.
And what would happen if, at the end of 24 months, they were still in it, and they said, well, we're not moving? What would happen at that point?
We would go turn their power off.
That would get their attention.
Which would be helpful if you put that in your motion. If, after 24 months, you are still occupying the building, the parish is authorized to cut off power.
Making it official.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Entertain a motion, just to say what Ricky said.
I'll move for approval of this, plan review with stipulation of a 24-month timeframe be placed on the office, mobile office building.
And to authorize the parish to turn the power off if they're still in it 24 months.
Can we do that legally?
Soon we can, Lindsay, correct?
Okay. Yeah, okay, I'll add that to the motion.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is a public hearing to recommend approval or denial to the parish council revision to the Parish Unified Land Development Code, A, a fee for planning commission notification
Basically, this recommendation is a recommendation for, to change our, to change the Unified Land Development Code, so that, let me start at the beginning here. A few months ago, a few months ago, the planning commission recommended approval for a sign ordinance that had applicants go out and post signs for all subdivision, or for all major subdivisions that they were proposing for a preliminary plat. That was approved by council. However one was approved, there was no fee, there was no fee attached to it. So right now, the parish is just kind of providing that service to the applicant without a fee attached. So what this is doing is basically just going in and cleaning up the ordinance and attaching a fee to that, to that sign posting when they submit their application, so we can regain some of that, some of that finance.
Okay. Questions or comments? Ricky?
Just for the record, the sign is required for any application that comes before the commission that's not a final plat. So basically, the business park that we just saw would have had a sign posted, the preliminary subdivisions that we saw tonight would have one, family partition would have one. So it's basically anything that comes before you, we now notify the public via a yellow sign. It's a two-sided sign, so they actually have to buy two of them, and this allows the parish to recoup those fees. And, you know, it's not a, we're not overcharging for these signs, we're basically paying what we pay, so.
Okay, Ricky, and also, there is an option if they want to supply the sign that meet the regulations, they can do it at their cost.
Yes, sir, and the ordinance spells out, it has to be a yellow sign, it has to have black letters. This is what has to be on the sign. If they want to go and paint it themselves, as long as they submit us the pictures, which you saw in your packet, the pictures have to be time and date stamped, so we know they've been posted in adequate time. Yes, they can provide their own signs.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion.
Open for a public hearing.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, open for a public hearing. Are there any, anyone to speak? Okay, say none. Entertain a motion, then.
We approve, acceptance there for a recommendation at the $25.
I'll second the motion.
Second? Zamori, who was the second?
Recommend approval to the council.
The motion is to recommend approval to the council of this item.
Okay. Also, I think we better make it clear that it's $25 each.
Yes.
And not just $25.
Okay. Did you get that added to the motion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Before you start the staff report, I'd ask for the next meeting to be added to the staff report, would you guys do some discussion on alternative construction methods, as we discussed tonight, for mitigation? Maybe bring in some engineers that oppose or approve or whatever, just so we can start talking about that. Thank you. Okay, staff report?
All right, the first item, and it's labeled 1203, this is 2012, and this is the third item that we brought before you. That's how our numbering convention's going to move forward, is just the order in which they were brought forward. Density restrictions on substandard roadways. Currently, our subdivision regulations restrict divisions of land on roads less than 18 feet in pavement width, which is still considered a substandard road in the subdivision ordinance. This restriction applies to both major and minor subdivisions, which would include simple divisions and family partition. This current restriction requires the developer to acquire additional right-of-way, which has been proven illegal in other jurisdictions. What the proposed language does is remove the problematic wording from the existing ordinance while ensuring the road is to our parish standard. It will also allow simple divisions and family partitions to be divided on roads less than 18 feet wide. The current code reads, "Considering any proposed major or minor subdivision which exits," it's misspelled, "exits on any street which is less than 18 feet wide of asphalt, concrete, or other hard surface, the developer shall secure a 60-foot right-of-way along the street from his development to a street designated blah, 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 blah." We want to revise that language to simply read, "No major or minor subdivision may be developed on any street which is less than 18 feet in pavement width." And B, "Any division of property of eight lots or less of the parent tract is exempt from this provision." So it allows the simple divisions and family partitions to continue, and it simply says, "If you're a major or minor subdivision, you cannot be exiting on a road that is less than 18 feet in pavement." We've gotten rid of the provision that a developer has to go secure a right-of-way.
All right. Questions, comments? Okay.
We would like to request a public hearing next month.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes.
Next, we have item 1204, definition of simple division. Currently, a simple division is defined as a subdivision of eight lots or less that front along a public road and follow all provisions of the subdivision ordinance. These divisions can be signed by the chairman or his designee. However, there are several divisions that are not defined as simple divisions, but follow the simple division process. This includes divisions that move property lines, combine lots, and other such matters. The following language defines more definitely the types of divisions that don't require a public hearing and can be approved at staff level. And what we did is, we created a list of six items that are just reviewed at the staff level, they don't require a public hearing, they don't even come to the commission, they're typically, somebody bought 20 feet from their neighbor so they can add to their lot and build a shed, or somebody sold some property to a cousin and, you know, reconfigured the lot. They're not creating any lots, they're not adding anything to the infrastructure system. So we just created this list of definitions of things that the chairman or his designee are authorized to sign. Once again, it's really a housekeeping matter, we already do it, we're just putting into the code, so everybody knows what we do.
Just have one question, Mr. Chairman. The only thing that seems sort of out of character with the rest is number three, the acquisition of strips of land for public easement, including the widening or opening of streets or the location of utility right-of-way. This, this is the only place for this to fall under, under the definition of simple It just seems a little, it seems out of, out of character with the other five stipulations.
I mean, it's just saying that basically, if they're, if the public is acquiring right-of-way, that they don't have to go through the actual subdivision process, that they can go ahead and just purchase that strip of land from that owner, because typically, in that process, and we have lots of these cases when they come in, they, it just becomes its own individual parcel, especially during the sale, or the sale between the two. And so this just makes sure that, again, we're doing it, we're doing it through the simple division process and not through...
So we think this is the best place for this to be defined.
Correct. So for example, if we're going to widen a road, and the parish goes through the right-of-way acquisition process, we're creating these little strips of land that the parish has purchased. Those are simple divisions. They're designated as not a building... They're designated as not a buildable lot, and we don't think they need to come to a public hearing for us to be able to do that.
Question, if a decision is made by staff, we have recommendations or remedies in place if they want to seek something if it's not favorable, or they, we have any?
We always tell applicants, if they don't like our determination, they can come before this body and get your recommendation or approval. We tell every applicant that.
Okay. So mechanisms are in place for them?
Yes, sir.
For alternative results?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
And this would become ultimately an ordinance approved by the council?
Yes, sir, this is already in your code of ordinances in the definition section, we're just adding to it.
Okay. So does this also require a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we need a motion.
We have to move for that.
That we have a public hearing? Then we have a public hearing to recommend approval of this definition change. Do I have a motion? Okay. Mr. Sanji, second?
I'll second.
Josh? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And then the very last one that's in the packet, and this is basically just starting the framework of trying to look at how, how we start to deal with development in our school district, and as, as new development comes in, and how that relates to the expansion of our school district. And more or less, what this outline does is just begins that conversation and starts to get, starts to give staff, staff time to, or staff our ideas to you guys, what we think is the best way to go about this direction, and this is just basically the outline about how to go about doing it. For the most part, the first step that we're working on as staff is just kind of the background data and all that, which is, which is in the first objective of that. And that can kind of begin to mold and help, help you through that situation, but for the most part, this is, this is, this is kind of our idea about how to go about solving the situation between development and the expansion of the school district, so.
Also, a public hearing?
No.
No? Not required.
A question, though. At one point, a few years back, Lance, you and I guess Chad are, who was it now?
Brian.
Maybe, yeah. Had worked with the school system and provided us maps, and we kind of shared a database, and is that still going on? So, so our school district lines are on our database, and you don't have access to it?
Yes, sir, we have access to the, to the school districts, yes, sir. But we not, I guess, in communication with Chad like we were before, with when Brian was on staff with us. He's now with DPW.
Ultimately, with respect to sharing of data, what we'd love to see is the ability to click on a parcel of land and know that that parcel of land goes to this elementary, this middle, and this high, and here's the current population for those three schools. And we would know, based on whatever information we generate and policies or objectives that we create, whether or not we could create a positive or negative recommendation just based on that item, or what the fix is, or getting to that level. We're getting to that level of sharing data, we're currently updating our GIS system right now, and I can assure you that as we move forward and advance our technology, we will be in many meetings with Chad and those guys about that data. We're gonna meet with Mert and the assessor's office with, for their data. We're gonna try to get as much data into a public data system that we can, so that every time we give you guys a recommendation, we're giving you as much information as we can get to make a good, positive recommendation.
Okay. Any other comments?
My comment. I like the idea that we're beginning to start dialogue with impacts of the population. We know what the population is now, and we know in the very near future, we're looking at two-hundred thousand, close to that. With that in mind, Ascension Parish has one of the top school districts there is in the state. If we are to retain that, we've got to look now and consider the population and consider the resources we have to look at to maintain that. So I do like the idea of what this document provides.
Thank you. Have a planning commission quarterly update.
And for the most part, this is just provided to you guys, so you know what's currently in the approval process and where everything's at, that you've previously approved, and when deadlines are coming up, and where they're at in the, in the final plat. So this is just more for, for information for, for the commission.
Okay, thank you. Entertain a motion for adjournment?
Move for adjournment?
Second. Did you get them both? All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. We'll take a ten-minute break and start the zoning meeting.